The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
We can add the sale of the fire truck. I know that the agenda for the City of Warren Council meeting for May 9th be amended to add number three under Mayor's report, commission to sell the vehicle. Motion in second to amend the agenda to add the fire truck sale. All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Okay, now then, we'll move forward. I know that we approve the minutes for April the 11th as emailed to us and printed. Second. Motion in second to approve the minutes of the April the 11th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Okay, Clark's report.
Okay, you should have a copy of the April statement of revenues and expenditures.
I know that we approve the statement of revenue and expenditures as presented to us at our agenda meeting. Motion in second to approve the statement of revenue and expenditures. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous.
You should also have a cash balance report for April as well. You see the sales and use tax for the month of April. The city taxes will receive eighty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents for a year to date total of three hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and three cents. Those taxes were up seventeen percent from this time last year. The county will receive fifty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents for a year to date total of two hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred three dollars and twenty-two cents. And the county taxes were up a fourteen percent from this time last year.
Things are still looking good.
Okay, you should have a copy of Brad County's report for April as well.
Okay, get my report started. We have an ordinance. Nine forty-one. I know that we place ordinance number nine forty-one on its first reading. Second. Motion in second to place ordinance nine forty-one on its first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Ordinance number nine forty-one, an ordinance permitting alderman memory Frazier to hold employment with the City of Warren, whereas the City of Warren, Arkansas has need for qualified personnel, and whereas restricting employment of employees to exclude elected officials would handicap the city's efforts to employ qualified personnel in such positions, and whereas Arkansas Code fourteen forty-two one oh seven may in some instances be interpreted as preventing such employment in the absence of an authorizing ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Warren, Arkansas, Section One, with the understanding that memory Frazier is an alderman of the City of Warren, Arkansas, and is hereby authorized to hold employment as manager of the Warren City Pool at a salary of four thousand per season in consideration of said employment. Section Two, all ordinances previously enacted to conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. I know that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine forty-one on its second reading. Second. Motion in second to place ordinance number nine forty-one on its second reading. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Ordinance number nine forty-one, an ordinance permitting alderman memory Frazier to hold employment with the City of Warren. I know that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine forty-one on its third and final reading. Second. Motion in second to place ordinance number nine forty-one on its third and final reading. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Ordinance number nine forty-one, an ordinance permitting alderman memory Frazier to hold employment with the City of Warren. I move that we adopt ordinance number nine forty-one. Second. Motion in second to adopt ordinance number nine forty-one. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Okay.
Mayor, I do have a question. Not in reference to the ordinance, but do we do swimming classes at the city pool?
Uh, I don't know. But I will check and see if we do, and I think that would be a good idea if we did.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, here we go, swimming lessons, swimming classes there.
Okay. Is there a cost for the swimming classes, or are they just a part of our operation?
I will have to check on that also. I'm not there that early in the morning if they're, I'm sure they're done in the morning before the pool opens. But I'll get you some answers.
Okay, and the fee is, I heard her mention at our agenda meeting about having to write out receipts. So the fee is, is it one dollar?
I believe it's a dollar to get in, and auditors are asking us to do a receipt for each one.
Okay, so if there are swimming lessons, it's still one dollar?
I will check on that and get back with you.
Okay.
Okay, the sanitation truck interest rate bid, as you remember last council meeting, decided to go with leasing trucks, and so we had bids, we got the interest rate bids, and First State Bank and Warren Bank bid, and you can see the low bid. So now we need to accept one.
I move we accept the lowest bid.
Second. Okay, that, okay, motion in second to accept the lowest bid, which would be Warren Bank and Trust. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands unanimous. Okay, now the memo to sell the following vehicle to be sold with your commission of the seventy-eight Chevrolet fire truck, four six oh four two of the fire department. Would I put that out for bid? I know that we put out for bid the nineteen-seventy-eight Chevy fire truck, four six oh four two. Motion in second to sell and bid out the nineteen-seventy-eight Chevrolet fire truck. Any questions? If none, then show of hands, vote by show of hands unanimous. Okay, that is all of my report, and so we will, do we have any, did anyone sign up for comment?
No.
Okay, any aldermen recognize? Okay, administrative committee meetings, we'll start with Chief Hilden.
Good evening. Good evening. I believe you all have my much support in front of you. This was pretty active tonight, the change. One thing I would like to comment on is that we did receive the vehicle that you guys voted on last month, the Ford F-150 pickup truck. We do have the police department in preparation of getting it prepped to go on patrol. The only issue that we have right now is that like a lot of things, our stuff are on back order, so we're waiting on this tripping and the radio things that make you come in for it. But since we get it, we'll be on patrol. But we're there at the police department. Have a seat.
Anyone have any questions? Alderman Frazier is not here, so nothing from the police committee. If there are no questions, then thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Power chief.
Good evening again.
Hello.
Warren Fire Department responded to twelve calls during the month of April, with one of those being told about all Fire Department members. We held our monthly meeting on April the fourth, twenty-five members present. Our total voluntary payroll for the month was eleven hundred dollars. We had a lengthy discussion about the fire at the high school, what we, what we did well and what we could have done better, which was a nice discussion. We placed a new engine in service on May the second, which was last week, and y'all sold my fire truck, so that's all I have.
It's not sold yet.
You're going to sell the fire truck.
So I do have a question. So you do a debriefing after each one of the fires? That's very good.
Yes, ma'am. That's a big part of going over, but we, we do it most every, the bigger the call, the longer we discuss it, of course, and that was a long, lengthy thing, so we had lots to go over. But yes, ma'am, that's a, that's a good training, too. We go back after the fact, and it's a no, it's a no judgment time. If you've got something to say, you say it, and.
Well, that's what a debriefing is.
Right, exactly. Anybody can speak up from the newest to the oldest, and everybody gets to talk.
Good. No other questions? Thank you, chief. Now sanitation, Mr. Johnson. Good evening.
Well, we've got our compactor back. Real good news for us. Don't know how long it's gonna work, but the guy did a good job getting it prepared. Hadn't had any, any trouble with it so far. All the trucks seem to be running pretty good, and all the guys are doing a great job. Still having trouble with the red containers around town about getting things put in them that they're not supposed to, but we're getting help from the police and comments from the community and phone calls and so on, and that's helped a little bit. We're always just a little bit behind, a little faster we are. Got our limb truck fixed to the tune of about seven thousand dollars, but we're back up and running, so. And we caught up on our limbs pretty quick. We had, we had around forty-one stops to make, and we doubled up on them in a couple of weeks and pretty much, I think, got caught up. I think we got a few more on the new list now, but other net things seem to be pretty good, and with this bid and stuff on the trash trucks that we got, y'all let us get, we, I don't see anywhere we're going with those. And that's all I've got in sanitation.
Alderman Burks, do you have anything?
No, you've gotten the thunder out of the way, so I was at the bid about the truck, but it's already been taken care of with the steam and angible going through. We've got it all taken care of.
What's the timeframe again, this was the delivery of the trucks? I knew it was gonna be pushed out.
Well, we put an order in, and so we're looking at right now six to eight weeks. But we should be okay. Our trucks are, our trucks are holding up, holding up good. I have one truck in Eldorado, a container truck, one of our old container trucks that's getting rebuilt, and it should be hopefully done this week, so gotta give us a backup with what I got, and when our new one comes in, then we can pick out the one we want to sell and be able to recoup some of our money back, because right now is a good time to sell them, because nobody's got them, so. But we should be in pretty good shape in another three months, maybe altogether, real good shape.
Okay, there's no other questions, we'll go on to building official report.
We did our normal inspections on electrical plumbing, stay out of school quite a bit. Working on, on the properties now, on the, being on the condemned properties. I have some there in front of you that, that time's ran out on, that y'all might want to look at, that need to be, that are ready to have something done if, if this is the time to discuss this. I'm new at this part, since I left and came back, I hadn't done this yet, so I didn't know exactly how, if y'all still did it the same way we used to, or take individual properties and go. All of them have had all the paperwork served, time's out, it's totally up to y'all. Five oh five North Myrtle, two oh nine West Pine, and the five oh four Rock Street.
Okay, that five oh four Rock, is that Miss Alma Barnett's home that you're referencing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I went by and talked to the gentleman that's living there.
For son?
Yes, ma'am, and he did a pretty good job the first day or two, and then, then he just kinda just quit, and then I've been back to talk to him two or three other times, and I'm not getting anywhere with him. The city has even actually picked up some of the stuff, but I can't anymore. I can't pick up anything, y'all do some stuff now, because he's really not, to be honest with you, he's really not supposed to be living in a house because there's no water and no electricity. But what am I gonna do? By kicking him out, where's he going? We don't need another one on there. But, so it's, you know, these three properties right here, whatever y'all need me to do, I'll be, I'll do. And the other properties, the later four eleven Cherry, fourteen oh three West Pine, and three oh eight Watts, received the prices, and they okay to do the cleaning on Cherry, the prices are okay to do on West Pine, and I'm still waiting on the prices on three oh eight Watts. That's a major house, total house to be torn down, and a property to be cleaned up, the other two are just mowed, so.
Rob, is there a chance that any of these places could be deemed unsanitary?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I looked at, oh, St. James, right across from St. James Church.
The Brown's home?
Yeah.
The Brown's family home.
And that's.
Oh, on that corner.
Yeah, I mean, something gonna happen there sooner or later, I don't know.
Is anyone living in there?
I think so.
I'm running into that quite, quite a bit, Mr. Burks, as far as people living in homes and no electricity, no water, and not supposed to be there, but as, as a rule, we don't do anything unless we get a complaint form, which, but I really don't know what to do with them if you catch them. I mean, that's going to be something we need to look at, I mean.
So on the parade, I was that you have a complaint form on all three of those?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We don't work them without them, because.
From a neighbor or a someone?
Yes, ma'am.
But that thing can be considered as a health hazard.
Yes, sir. All of them are being, all of these letters are being written on, on the, yes, on the unhealthy, unsanitary, unsightly ordinance that we have.
I'd be afraid of parasites.
And, yes, sir.
This one on Pine, was that the one at Pine, the corner of Pine and Seminary?
Uh, yes.
At the four oh eight stop sign?
Right, no, the one on Pine, uh, West Pine, yeah. No, that, it is one next to Harry Superett. Remember the old Harry Superett grocery store?
Oh, shoot down there. You're talking about two oh nine?
No, I'm sorry, no, I'm getting, I mean, two oh nine, yes, right here by the school, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
How you Seminary?
I've got two or three on Pine, and that's not on this list, but, yeah, you're right, uh-huh. Now, he did cut the grass, if you'll notice today, the yard's cut.
But you can see it on the front porch.
Well, that's, that too is, that falls under the unsightly. That's totally y'all's call and how you want to handle it.
It's a lot of unsightly throughout the city.
Right, there is, there is, I mean, but, I mean, if you want to back up there and start loading stuff on the man, force back onto the trailer and haul it off, it, I don't know. Y'all tell me what you want me to do, and I'll do it. I mean, we did it on Hyatt Street, that's right back where it was.
I'm just, I'm just got that on my list to ask about how it should be.
And, well, I, I, I can't bail him a letter because he won't take it, but I hand delivered one, because we have to redo the, you know, each, each occurrence, we've got to keep mile on. It's, it's worse now than I think it was, because a lot of it was in the house last time, now it's all out in the yard. I've been over there every morning, probably, probably seven o'clock the last week and a half, every morning, it's the only time I can catch it, because they cook breakfast in the back of that boat. And he swears that he'll have everything out by this coming Friday, but it's not, it's not gonna happen.
Probably he's not here yet.
No way.
She's taking it from the dumpster and bringing it from there.
It's just not gonna hap, you know, now after the twenty days are up, I can do, again, I'll be in front of y'all saying, here, what do y'all want to do at Hyatt? And what we did last time was before I, before I arrived, they backed up a trailer and loaded everything up, and took the truck over and put it all in a trailer.
That'd be a continuous thing there.
Well, he tells me he's moving to Mole Bay, so it'll be their problem, hopefully, because he's putting a boat on the, he's putting a boat on the river in Mole Bay, and that's where he's going with it, so.
Did he say the, when he was leaving?
He told me this Friday, all of it will be gone, so I don't know.
I will have a door and light for you.
Yeah, but I, I don't know, I really don't.
It's such a sensitive issue, especially since we do not have a homeless shelter here, and I'm looking at the five oh four Rock. I mean, I, I do realize that there's no, I understand no running water there, but Mrs. Barnett's home was one of the nicest ones within the city when she was, you know, living, and, and I know, you know, one of the sons lived there, but where would he go? We have homeless people now that doesn't have, so I don't, I don't really know what the answer is.
I know a lot of people, I know a lot of people are watching what we do, because I've talked to a lot of people on Rock Street. I've had people tell me, get the house cleaned up, get him gone, I've had people say, what are you gonna do, leave him alone? So, and my words were, we hit the city council meeting tonight, and you'll find out.
I'm going to defer to Ward one, is it? Okay?
Now, we have the book, we have the laws on the books to do whatever, but it's.
Where's his sister? She lives in Monticello. She's in Monticello? Mm-hmm, and, and the niece lives in Monticello as well.
Which son lives there? Which son lives there?
Darius, Darius. And, and there's not a son that lives here in Warren, but not in that house, but he lives in. Okay. I'll see if I can find out. I know some people who've been having a conversation and find out, so.
Okay.
So no, no action at this time, is that what? Whatever the council chooses to do. I say no action at this time and try to research, I mean, to put someone out with the temperature getting to be a hundred plus, I mean, where would he go?
I don't know, Ms. Anderson, but we might want to really talk about this, because we're, it might do a precedent right here that, that we don't want, I don't know.
It might what?
Might create a problem, open up a can of worms.
If we don't put him out?
If we don't clean up the property, which we have rules on our books to say we need to.
Okay, but we just referred it to the ward one, that falls under ward one, and she just say that she would cut traces back with you.
Okay, so.
Is that not what you said?
That's what I'm asking.
I did mention that, really, but it's just, you know.
And then I thought you asked if we're.
No action, being, you don't want us to go in and start taking, I mean, you all have the authority now to condemn it and take and go in and start cleaning up the property. Let me check with someone else, and I will, I will do that.
That's fine.
Do you want to take each one of these and discuss, I mean, two oh nine, are y'all ready to take action on it? I'm not sure where two oh nine is. It's five oh five, where, where is five oh five North Myrtle? I guess I'll start with that one.
Uh, two up from north of the post office, three houses up on the corner.
On the left-hand side?
Yes, ma'am, next to the property that burned a couple of months ago, pretty much.
Oh, okay. So someone's leaving that house?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then what about two oh nine?
Two oh nine's right over here across from the old high school.
Okay, anyone living there?
Yes, ma'am.
So he and his son?
Yes, ma'am. Their wife passed away, yes, ma'am. Neighbor's complaining about all the stuff on the, on the front porch and around the side of the house on the clutter. Was complaining about the yard being mowed, but the yard didn't get mowed over the weekend, but no action has been done around the yard as far as peeling anything up or the front porch.
Okay, so there's two oh nine, there is someone there, and the complaints is all of the items that surround.
The clutter on the front porch, yes, ma'am, that was the complaint made by the neighbor.
The clutter on the front porch.
Yes, ma'am, the neighbor, and, and around, around on the carport, the shed on the side, I've got a complaint form on it made by the neighbor on the west side.
And that's certainly just a cleanup?
Yes, ma'am.
And they have running water, I guess it's what?
Yes, ma'am, made it, I, I, yes, ma'am, and electricity. It's just a general cleanup, it's the unsightly line in our ordinance that this falls under.
I'd just hate to see us kick the can down the road again, but as I said, maybe, you know, maybe it wasn't going anywhere, but in order for us to really be progressive, where you, you talk about industry coming in, you have to have your town cleaned up, and we just talked about this section of town, but you go over Boy Street, see what's going on, and I said, this is a bit tired, this is like a third world country in some areas over there, and, you know, that's, that's, that's the city limits. But, you know, if you're gonna get business to come, you're gonna have to do something to show them. I mean, I've said it over and over and over again, it might not make sense to y'all, but it just, it just, it's just something that's gonna have to have to be act done, if you want business to come.
We're gonna have a motion for them to go and clean up two oh nine?
So move.
I'll say that. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, two oh nine West Pine, it's been a motion to clean it up, all those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. All right, now then, we're talking about five oh five North Myrtle. I know that we move forward. Second. Motion in second to move forward on cleaning up five oh five North Myrtle. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands? So move, unanimous. And then five oh four, if I understand, Ms. Councilwoman, Ms. Marshall is going to make some contacts and then get back, and we'll discuss that next meeting. Okay, okay, and then the other properties, the four eleven Cherry, fourteen oh three, y'all, and three oh eight, y'all have already voted on, and they're in the process of, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, anything else before we move on? If not, thank you, sir. Street Department, Mr. Hertzberger?
Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
We have started cleaning our ditch right now with many eggs replacing several coves that are bad with the landowner purchasing the coves, and we'll replace them in their That's gonna have to come to a kind of a stall for right now, because we gotta get, start getting the grease clean for things made of that. We'll still be working on the mad time permits, but everything going good so far.
Well, we see you in all neighborhoods, not just on one or two streets, so we appreciate that, that you're going into all of the wards.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're also doing some ditch pickup, and I know that sanitation department, he had them last week picking up some trash before the, the big spring cleanup, but I'm sure if you go down those streets within the next couple of weeks, you may not be able to tell, but the trash is getting picked up, it's just not staying cleaned up.
That's very true. You can pick it up today, and by Friday, you, you can't even tell it's there, and we'd actually picked it up.
Have we considered running something in our papers, you know, you know, about keeping our streets clean? I do periodically put some things out there on our Facebook page that talks, that, that addresses that. Maybe our papers would do something, something for us to help with that as well. Maybe our papers would do something, something for us to help with that as well. Absolutely. Okay, no other questions? Alderman Mosley, do you have anything? Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything from Community and Economic Development?
No.
Ways and Means, Mrs. Henderson, or business, okay. He can do that. All right. Mr. Wagner is not here tonight, because there are games at the, at the complex, and so he's, he's there overseeing that, has the concession stand open. Let's see, Planning Commission, you've got the minutes of their monthly meeting. Aviation Commission did not meet, but they have restarted the project out there, there was some, it, it went over money wise, and our engineer went after some more money, and he found the additional money, so that project is back on, and they will be finishing the apron out there. Water and Sewer Commission, you've got there, financials and meeting, minutes. Housing Authority, no meeting, the cultural center, nothing, is there any unfinished business? And no public statements, no one signed in, so the announcements, graduation, this is a, this is a busy week for our seniors, grad, graduation will be Thursday the twelfth, they had the honors assembly today, vacular, I believe, is tomorrow, but it's last term only. Market on Main will return this Saturday, May the fourteenth, and I believe she's got three food trucks signed up to come, so y'all come down.
Did you say free or three?
Three.
You said free food truck.
Three, one, two, three. Uh, the municipal building will be closed Monday, May the thirtieth, for Memorial Day. Pink tomato festival shirts are on sale, so get them while they're here. I need a motion to pay the bills for April.
Second.
A motion in second to pay bills for April, any discussion, all those in favor, by show of hands, unanimous, the next meeting will be June, the ninth for the agenda meeting, and the thirteenth for the council meeting, and Ms. Helen and I will be a year older after the, on, on that day, the day before. We have, we have, we share birthdays, so we just may have birthday party for ourselves. Council meeting, a motion to adjourn, move.
Go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor, by show of hands, all right.